Hello, welcome to Budget for the Common Good. I would like to begin by respectfully recognizing and acknowledging that we are gathered here this evening on the unsurrendered and unceded territorial lands of the Wallace Wallastock, Mi'kmaq and Passamaquoddy peoples. My name is Carol Chan and I will be the moderator for this evening's event. Thank you so much for tuning in and for sending us your questions. This evening, we are here for Budget for the Common Good. This is a pre-budget consultation with New Brunswick's three Green MLAs. David Kuhn, leader of the Green Party and MLA for Fredericton South, Megan Mitten, MLA for Memram Cook, Tamar, and Kevin Arsno, MLA for Kent North. As the 2022-23 budget fast approaches, your Green MLAs want to hear from you so they can amplify your voices in the legislature. David will also consider your input as he writes his pre-budget submission to the Minister of Finance later this month. As we are faced with the crises in climate change, healthcare and housing, as well as the ongoing effects of COVID-19, it is more important than ever for New Brunswickers to be politically engaged and express their priorities. You are doing just that by joining us tonight and asking questions, which I will be passing on to David, Megan and Kevin so they can answer as many as possible over the next hour. So please leave your questions in the chat. Thank you. So now let's hear from the leader of the Green Party, David Kuhn.
Thanks, Carol, and good evening, everybody. I'm really pleased you've been able to join us tonight. The province has been busy, the provincial government's been busy preparing its budget, which takes effect April the first for the next year. The way it's working, of course, is government departments, the regional health authorities like Horizon and Vitae have all been submitting their particular budgets and then overlaying that are the expenditures and changes to revenue measures that the government itself wants to see built into the budget to reflect their particular priorities on top of the sort of regular operating requirements for departments and regional health authorities. So they basically are going to pretty well finalize it within two weeks from now. So this is going to be a great opportunity for us to take the priorities that you're focusing on and you're sharing with us forward, both in terms of the submission that we'll make to the Finance Minister, but also in terms of when we reply to the budget itself with our speeches and reply to the budget, we can draw on some of the things we heard from you to include that in our response to the budget. So it's very much connected to the ground and the grassroots. So really, that's it. It's about $11 billion is what the budget is roughly every year these days. There was a financial report just came out today from the province is projecting a $485 million surplus, almost half a billion dollars surplus, when for this year, they were originally projecting a deficit of something like around 30 million roughly. There's also another 160-some-odd million dollars in carbon tax revenue, which is to be allocated as well. So there's climate action, there's seniors care, there's healthcare, there's mental healthcare, there's affordable housing, there's poverty reduction, all kinds of priorities that you might have and we're eager to hear them. Thanks.
Thanks, David. Megan, if you would like to take the floor?
Thanks, Carol, and thank you to everyone who's joined us here tonight. I guess I want to start by just acknowledging that it's been a difficult two years for a lot of people with the pandemic and frankly, there were a lot of problems with a lot of the systems we were dealing with before that. And I was thinking, there have been sort of jokes on the internet saying like, you know, you receive an email saying, "I hope this finds you well." And a lot of people saying, "This isn't finding me well." And so I just want to acknowledge, I know a lot of people have been having a hard time and and I think there's an opportunity with a budget for government to address some of the reasons that the people have been having a hard time. A clear one is properly investing in mental healthcare, but there are other things as well. And you know, when we look at a budget, we could talk about a lot of different things, but when you get down to basics, I think the budget should at least make sure that people have their basic needs met. And that's not happening in our province. There are people who are literally struggling to survive in different ways. And I mean, we've seen some really challenging situations. People have died because they've been unhoused and haven't had the care they need. And so this discussion is really about priorities. Budgets are about priorities and what are the government's priorities? And that's what we're going to see in this budget. Is it investing in healthcare and investing in training enough healthcare workers? Is it investing in things like making sure that people have a livable income? And is it investing in making sure that we have a proper food supply? We're looking at agriculture and farming and addressing food security, things like that? Are we addressing climate change, both looking at energy efficiency, but also looking at looking at, you know, energy, transportation? There are so many things we could look at, but again, we need to go back to the basics. And I guess throughout the budget discussions, we often see governments measuring things in GDP and really focused on growth. I guess I'd like to see things measured in terms of inequality, in terms of poverty rates, in terms of people's wellbeing, in terms of what our society looks like and how people are actually doing. And we often don't see that. We see numbers, we see GDP, we see constant growth, which we all know can't go on forever. And so it's about shifting our priorities and really investing in resilient, livable communities and taking care of people. So I look forward to hearing from you tonight and to having this discussion. And then, as David said, taking your voices to the legislature. And yeah, I'll hand it back to you, Carol. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Megan. And just before I hand it over to Kevin, I just wanted to commend all three of you as a layperson in terms of the work you've been doing for translating those numbers into real-life actions and meaning for people. I think you've been doing a great job. My own personal opinion, this is not a paid advertisement, but keep at it. So on to Kevin.
Thanks, Carol, and thank you to Megan and David for those opening remarks. And I guess I'll try not to go over the same things, but you know, this is tonight, we're talking about a budget for common good. And so we have seen, you know, 40 years of underfunding. And so when we see a lot of problems, this like, you know, looking at what kind of effect the pandemic had on our health system, that problem isn't going away. And so that's what we have to realize. It's not, these problems in our public services are not going away. And so we've been living since the McKenna era under neoliberalist neoliberalist policies, which have cut, cut, cut and cut. And so these ideals of common good and these ideals of strong public services and this ideal of eliminating poverty haven't been taken into effect in the past 40 years-plus budgets. So it's time to start putting that back. During the pandemic, we saw governments calling on citizens, on the people to be in solidarity. That was a word that was tossed around a lot, solidarity. Now it's time for government to show that solidarity with the people by investing in them, in us, as people. And so, and often, we hear, well, how do you invest that much into things like climate change and eliminating poverty and social or cooperative housing? Well, there's always a second side on a budget. And that's the revenue side. And so even if we do have a surplus and the government today was out in the news saying that, "Well, these are one-time transfers. We have to stay safe with it." There's a way of stabilizing these revenues. And the different ways that we could stabilize revenues are, you know, having a concrete plan and concrete action against tax havings. So there's these tax evasion schemes that we've legalized government after government in that we've helped rich people avoid paying taxes. And so to go after those and ensure that everyone is doing their fair share and investing into the common good needs to be happening. We also need to be, I think, alluded to it, we need to be, you know, really thinking hard about this myth of exponential growth that won't ever stop. So into our budgets, we need to start working in also degrowth and thinking about degrowth and how we're going to deal with that and how our communities are going to stay resilient through that. Because if we don't start thinking about degrowth, well, we can't attack the climate crisis. And so these false, we have to be, stay critical on these false solutions that government are offering. Like today, talked about slashing the double tax, which isn't actually a double tax. It's just that people that own their first house have a tax credit. And so it's not a double tax. These people that have two, three, four, five, 200 properties are paying full tax. And so it needs to stay that way. There's other ways also. I'm sure a lot of people have already heard about how we need to tax the web giants. New Brunswick does not have laws on taxing web giants. Certain jurisdictions do. And when we think about Facebook, Google and all those kinds of ads, that money could be re-put into our local, into our local media, independent local media. And when we think about things like Netflix and different services like that that aren't taxed in New Brunswick, this is the kind of money that could be re-put into our arts and culture sector and ensure that we have a thriving arts and culture sector that I'll probably touch later in the meeting. But I'm going to stop there for now because I can go on even in my second language for a long time. So I'm going to control myself and stop that right now and throw that back to Carol. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Kevin. I really appreciate you walking through the revenue side of the ledger. Oftentimes, when we have these meetings, we don't, I think, touch on them enough. And it seems, as Megan was referring to, that if we're looking at how we want to shape our society, that's definitely part of the equation. So. So I have the first question here for David from Gilles-Cormier. And he asks, "What can we do as a province to make sure we have enough people to fill the labor shortage that is increasing day by day because of our aging population?" David, you're on mute right now.
That happened. Okay, no, I'm not. There's plenty to be done. I would start with international students. International students in our universities, all of them are part of our community and over the time at the University of Crete, they become part of our community. Many, many want to stay and contribute to our community into the future. And we need to make sure that New Brunswick is supportive of them while they're in school and appealing to them when they graduate to stay. So there is a source, as well as, of course, people moving from elsewhere in the country and immigrating into New Brunswick. But to do these things, we need to address some very important issues. We need to ensure the government puts in place a meaningful and effective program to tackle racism. Because if we're inviting the world to come to New Brunswick, if we're inviting international students to encourage them to stay, we've got to come to grips with racism. And that's a key piece here. Other provinces have taken some significant initiatives and there's lots of good examples to draw from in terms of what role government can play in that way. Similarly, but also, we have, as we know, a big problem with affordable housing in the province. And if we're going to try and increase our population, we need to increase the supply of affordable housing. And there is a direct role the government can play. It has the tools on the books in the form of the New Brunswick Housing Corporation. Its mandate in law is to basically support the development of affordable housing, things like non-market housing, cooperative housing, nonprofit housing, and so on. But it's been not extinct, but you know, hibernating since the McKenna years. And it needs to be revitalized, be brought back to play a vital role in supporting the development of affordable housing, particularly in the nonprofit and cooperative sector, that non-market housing that doesn't depend on a profit motive, but provides a shelter and a home to people who need it.
Thank you, David. Continuing on the line of affordable housing, Cecile Casita says that home care in New Brunswick needs to be addressed in affordable care. So affordable care, affordable housing, excuse me, and staffing. Government continues to build nursing homes. That's not where seniors want to live. Megan, do you mind taking that and do you need me to repeat it because I kind of cut it halfway?
No, that's okay. And thank you, Cecile, for the question. Yes, this is a very important issue and it's only going to, I guess, continue to become an even bigger issue, I would say. I've heard from seniors, one of the issues is that, yeah, not everyone wants to be in a nursing home. And so what are the other options? And there are some creative different housing opportunities that could be invested in to ensure that there are different options. So I know some seniors have said they want to be able to maybe share some different spaces, have different accessible options especially. But the other thing would be being able to age in place. And so again, being able to make sure, I'd say, as housing is built in the future, we should make it more accessible for everyone, but being able to make those accommodations, upgrade anything that you need. But then having access to home care workers, for example. We have issues with staffing in terms of like in hospitals and nursing homes, also for home care. I know that when my dad was sick and he moved into my home. And so that's what we did, but I had so much trouble finding home care workers to be able to help out. So I think that's really important. The other thing is that we're seeing more and more, and this isn't new, but it's getting a lot worse, is that seniors are having trouble affording, staying in their place. So we also need to make sure that the different housing options that exist include affordable housing, include making sure that the rent can't spike and that seniors aren't being kicked out of their homes. And so I think that, as with a lot of these issues, there's not one silver bullet. We need to have different options for different people. And so I think that making sure that the proper care, you know, infrastructure that will look different for different people, but then also addressing the poverty aspect of it, that people have what they need to live in dignity and to not lose their housing.
Thank you, Megan. Our next question is another question for David. Bethany Young says that COVID has put a lot of strain on many sectors. The one that concerns her the most is the social development sector. Frontline social workers trying to support the most vulnerable children in our communities are receiving more requests than ever. The amount of turnover is extreme and the lack of support for foster families is dire. She says she is concerned for the wellbeing of these young people. Would you comment on that, David?
Yeah, I would say, when we have a surplus of $485 million to work with in the province, that this is exactly the kind of thing that Departments of Social Development should be able to draw on to provide the resources they need to address the significant issues that have developed in the wake, well, not the wake, but in the course of the pandemic here. There's been a lot of impacts. The demand, serious attention and real assistance, and that costs money. There's $485 million surplus for next year. These are the kinds of priorities that it should be spent on so that it supports people and helps people recover and address the real challenges that face us coming through COVID and hopefully out the other end and then your future.
Thank you, David. I think Kevin might have something to add to that response from David.
Well, actually, I wanted to add a bit on the labor shortage. Because something I see often in my writing and elsewhere in the province is also in talking about living in dignity and everything. And, you know, we need to ensure that there is well-paid and livable wages. And we see right now that there's a shortage. I've been seeing it in my writing and I'm sure you guys are seeing it all across the province. There is a labor shortage in bus drivers and many schools are asking, district, school districts are asking parents to drive their kids to and from school morning and night. And this is the situation in many communities in my writing. So, but they're still without a contract. Since the QP general strike, the only people that had and signed a contract were the bus drivers. So ensuring well-paid livable wages. And I think that we need to be also, you know, having the reflection as a society on ensuring that there is proper wealth sharing. And, you know, capping wages, capping wage gaps is what I mean. Between the highest earner and the lowest earner of companies. And some jurisdictions are moving into that direction and ensuring that there's pay equity. We still don't have pay equity in New Brunswick, in the private and I'd say the public sector. And so there's addressing these kind of issues and making sure that people, and I think everyone wants to work a meaningful job. And so sometimes when you don't feel that you're being treated in a meaningful and dignified way, and some of these job shortages definitely would not completely disappear, but part of it.
Thank you, Kevin. And I think Megan has something to add here.
Yeah, one of the themes I'd say so far is we're talking about labor issues. And I wanted to add, Kevin addressed pay equity, which was something I wanted to address. So, you know, yeah, being paid fairly. And the other thing is that childcare, affordable childcare is a really big issue for a lot of people. And it's a barrier to being able to be in the workforce. And there are studies and real-life case studies that show that when there's affordable childcare, that especially women's engagement in the workforce increases. And so this is essential, that there's very accessible, very affordable. Ideally, we'd have universal childcare and we'd have universally funded education and universally funded post-secondary education. That's where we need to go. So we're covering people's education and childcare. And so at the other end, so we need childcare, we also need training. And we need New Brunswick students to not be going into severe debt among the highest in the country in order to, you know, become a nurse, for example. We need proper funding for things like nursing seats, but we need access to all kinds of different training to be able to be in the labor force and work in these jobs that we're talking about. So I guess I would say, I just wanted to add those things in terms of, you know, education and that there's a gendered element to some of this. Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, Megan. And thank you for raising the issue of gender equity, both you and Kevin. I do believe in looking at the last year's budget that the government generally has started using gender-based analysis to start. But it is at least a lens and maybe somewhere to actually hold people's task because they've committed to it. And I'd be interested to hear, not tonight, but in the future, what advances have been made based on what was promised in that lens and whether that lens actually makes sense. One example was tourism dollars being allotted to a sector that is primarily serviced by women. But I'm not sure how much that actually impacts us as a group. So I'll leave that for another day. I believe we have another question from Gilles-Cormier for Kevin this time. "How can we work with municipalities to fix the affordable housing issue, not only in urban areas, but rural areas as well?"
Absolutely. And it needs to go back to a community-based, I mean, municipalities, local communities know the needs and know what the problem is. And if we leave it up, like the conservatives would love to do it, say, the free market will take care of it, which is completely bogus. We're going to see a lot of development in the city areas because that's where the return on investment is probably going to be higher. And so if you leave it to that, you're not going to be addressing the needs of New Brunswickers and citizens all across the province. So how do you do that? I think you need to be giving more resources. And so sharing the provincial part and asking municipalities to be able to assess those needs and develop models that help those needs. So is it part social housing? Is it part, you know, encouraging cooperatives, encouraging different planning into municipalities? And all by continuing to go forward with the whole ideal of equal chances put in place by the Robichaud government and in making sure that there's equitable transfer so that there's not some regions in the province which are being completely left out because they're seeing maybe degrowth in population whatsoever, but the need is still there. And one thing that definitely can't happen is cutting the double tax, like the Higgs government wants to do. And this is not going to help affordable housing. This is not going to help housing development. This is only going to help accumulation of more private property. Landlords are not there to offer housing. They're there to invest into private property. And so this needs to be a community-based solution. And I think that the municipal community level is the best level to look and understand and find creative solutions to this problem.
Thank you, Kevin. On to David again. Dawn Mokler asks if there are any plans for more education in our healthcare system. Prevention and education will take pressure off hospitals.
I would say sadly, no, right now. In fact, we were at Public Accounts Committee today and I was asking that very sort of theme question to the New Brunswick Health Council Representative Stephane Robichaud. So this is a role for public health. It's part of its mandate to be the lead on that, to draw on other parts of the health system. Unfortunately, I think two things happened. One is it was kind of decapitated when the former Liberal government chopped it into pieces and sent parts of different branches of public health off to other departments. So it really reduced the capacity of public health to do that kind of advocacy and that kind of education and awareness. to do that kind of advocacy and that kind of education and awareness building. And I'll give you a really simple example. They were they were producing materials that were quite good around different health prevention, health promotion agendas. And that all stopped some years ago when when they got chopped up and 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 distributed around the the government. So that is that is a problem, that's for sure. So the capacity issue. And then you and then you have to ask, okay, who's who's looking at that now then? And the answer really is public health hasn't got the ability as is currently construed to do that. And we need, we need that role back, whether it's and another example would be looking at, looking at young families, new families with with babies. You know, the the kind of health promotion and preventative measures that could be applied right from the get-go are difficult to do anymore because not everyone gets a visit anymore from from public health nurses at the birth of a baby. Few people do, in fact. And we thought we were making progress with the first clinic of midwives who do wonderful postnatal care. But government and the health authorities have decided not to roll the the Midwivery Clinic model out beyond the single clinic that exists in Fredericton. So there really needs to be someone in government who's got that mandate, and I don't see it. And I don't see it, even though the rhetoric is there, rhetoric is there. I don't see it as a priority. It was one of the items that was supposed to be addressed in the healthcare reform, and they failed to.
Megan, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think David did a good job of addressing that. And I appreciate that he mentioned Midwivery and perinatal health and the province, I think, drops the ball on on that. And and a lot of the the preventative things that we need and I I want to just also look at this through the frame of the social determinants of health. So that basically means, you know, what what contributes to our health and some of the key things are some of those basics that government isn't ensuring that people have, but like making sure that people aren't living in poverty, making sure that people have housing, having a housing-first approach, making sure that people have access to food and not just food, but like healthy food, local food, food that meets their their different needs, whether those are cultural or otherwise, addressing mental health, all of these things contribute to health. And so I I don't, people's lives are valuable without attaching dollars and cents to it, obviously, but from a budgetary perspective, it also makes sense to to address people's health before before they have to be in a hospital. If they need a hospital, it should be there, but but definitely addressing preventative health is so important and and governments are so short-sighted when it comes to this and many other things.
Thank you, Megan. Over to Kevin. Jane Dula says that the minimum wage and social assistance are way too low. The surplus should be used to to help address this. So much of this points to the need for basic universal, sorry, universal basic income. Perhaps you could elaborate on that thought, Kevin?
Yes, and and absolutely. I mean, wage increases need to be happening. We've been calling for it for a long time. Government could 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 slap its its it's, if it wants to, about the thirteen-dollar minimum wage increase, but that's still not a livable wage. It's in New Brunswick. It's still not a dignifying wage. So this this needs to be addressed. Fair negotiation. We've seen them negotiate and and they're not, they're not negotiating, you know, with with good intentions. So and and when we think about social development, I mean, rates, they are completely, and and I I see it day in and day out at my constituency office and eliminating poverty needs to be a major focus in in today's society. But you can't eliminate poverty without also looking at different factors and investing substantially like Megan alluded to and David also to mental health into addiction services. And so I I we we see it in in food security. These are all things that need to 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 be part of this this rethinking of the economic paradigm that that we live in. And it goes back to what I was saying into capping wage gaps, fighting tax evasion. Tax evasion and and these different wealth inequalities are the reasons that we cannot that governments cannot act upon these things. So these are, these are choices, violent choices that that governments are making and in not addressing these issues. Because they prefer permitting a few to continue to get away with with, you know, robbing us of of good public services and dignified life for all. And so universal basic income is 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 part of that solution. And but it's it's a it's a broader, it's a broader picture, and you need to be looking at at the different things. But yes, absolutely. I mean, it's a surplus needs to go to help the people and not not to cut a double tax to help some people accumulate more property because by accumulating more property, they're continuing to depossess others.
Thank you, Kevin. On a similar topic regarding social assistance, Caitlin Leyden wants to know if the budget might address the household income policy. Megan?
Thanks for the question, Caitlin. It would be great if if it did. It would be great if it did, but I I'm not sure we're going to see that. And the so the household income policy, I know Caitlin knows this, but the household income policy essentially takes away income that you may be receiving, like social assistance or benefits if you have a disability. If if you, for example, get married and move in with your partner, the government can say, oh, you're you're not going to receive your income anymore. And there are a lot of different ways that this impacts people. And I've seen many constituents up against this. One of the ways it impacts people is if they have a disability and they want to get married, move in with their partner. And and so it's part of, part of what happens with these government policies is that they, in this case, it's discriminating against people with disabilities. And there's a gendered element from from what I've seen is that it disproportionately impacts women with disabilities. And and so this is the type of policy that we shouldn't have. And what is and and I guess I want to address this in in two ways. One is that what we're talking about is is people people's income and and them having their income taken away or having their their rights limited. And and again, we need to make sure that people are able to live in dignity or and and are respected and that their rights are not infringed upon. And unfortunately, this, that's what's happening. The other thing that I have learned about since being elected that just frustrates me and is unacceptable is the way that social development and ends up going after people who are basically living in in poverty. If if social assistance rates are are poverty rates, it's there, or it's the, it's an income that that is under the the poverty line. And they they go after people and they'll even cut that off and they'll just claw it back whenever they can. And I don't it's not about the social workers. I think the social workers really work really hard with not enough resources in a in a bad system. But it's it's so disrespectful and terrible. But then to point to what Kevin's saying, there are billionaires who just do whatever they want, basically, and and extract from our society and extract from our province. And government doesn't doesn't just lets them do whatever they want. And in fact, helps to write laws that support them and help them to just get richer and richer. And and it's just completely unacceptable. It's completely backwards. And again, this is about choices and priorities. And so I would like to see the household income policy changed. I would like to see the social assistance and disability benefits system overhauled. And I know that there are people there there are people who have been advocating for for that like Caitlin, like others, and and keep up the fight. We will continue to advocate for that as well. But this is, again, going back to human dignity and about human rights. And and I I feel like governments are not living up to their their duty to respect people's human rights.
Thank you, Megan. Next is for David. Jane Dool says that coherent public health policy is very much needed. She says that the one-size-fits-all in healthcare doesn't work, or one size doesn't fit all. And preventative healthcare needs more support, which I think echoes something that was said earlier. David, do you want to say a few words on that now?
Yeah, we, I mean, we have the structure in a way to to ensure that no one gets trapped into the one-size-fits-all mentality because we have regional public health organized on a regional basis with with medical officers of health, so physicians with specialties in public health situated each in each of the regions of the province. Where 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 I see the thing falling apart is they actually don't have any staff to speak of in the region in the region they're in. So whether it's Charlotte County or or the the Canadian Peninsula, they have to rely on the public health staff that are employed by Vitalité or Horizon to to deliver services. And so the kind of work of developing locally tailored programs is more difficult because of that that division. So so because they don't really have staff in the regions, they they end to be, end up kind of being more oriented towards the center in Fredericton. And that's where the other public health people are. So so naturally, that's where a lot of their conversation and program development occurs. So so that could be fixed in in a reasonable restructuring of of healthcare to recognize the the essential role that public health plays on a regional basis and and really tap into its full potential, which we're not.
Thank you, David. We're going to be jumping back to, I guess, municipal affairs. Brad Cross says it might be helpful to ensure the newly established municipalities have enough funding and support to be used at the local level in order to take on expanded expanded activities in the context of municipal reform. Can Kevin speak to the new municipalities, what they need to succeed?
Definitely. Well, first of all, the province something that, you know, provincial, our federal politicians don't like doing is is handing over power with with the resources. So they need, they need, we need more local community-centered power, I guess. There's probably a better word for it in English, but I'm just not thinking of it right now. And but they also need resources. And and again, I I bring us back to equal opportunities. And so we need to keep that in mind and and make sure that and that that there is a redistribution across the province to make sure that that there is, you know, a good transfer of of these of these resources, but making sure that communities do have the resources to do that. And I'd add to that, that, you know, on the local level, we need to be thinking about and being very conscious about the way that we organize our our local democracies. So we need deep democracy. We need, you know, the people that are implicated and the people that are are going to be that that I I can't think of the the word in English, but the people that are going to be affected by these policies be implicated in in the drafting, in the thinking of. And and so and there needs to be this kind of major thought process and 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 time to develop these these models of deep democracy. And it's not just in 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 housing or or our different, but also in in transportation, goes back to the question about how a surplus could be used to to eliminate poverty. And, you know, we we often talk about universal basic income. But there's also a lot of 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 gratuity. And so stuff being free, like public transportation, having a better public transportation service in New Brunswick would help a lot and in 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 attacking these problems. And having public spaces, so organizing our cities around public spaces where you could go be with fellow citizens without having to spend money. And so organizing our cities as as these livable spaces. And 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 then also, we, when I think about gratuity, and I know Megan talked about it, but I but I right away start thinking of my my years as a student leader and and think about education. But anyway, I'm getting far from the question of municipal reform, but but it does, it does impact in 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 these different kind of ways. So so thinking about transportation, public spaces, and thinking geographically also in our cities, having, you know, attacking climate change and making sure that government is is in letting go of the resources. And that's, I guess, the main part of my message is that it can't always come with this ideal that 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 daddy government, because we all know it's a patriarchal government, knows better. And so we need to start having confidence and and trusting and empowering local communities that know the needs of the citizens a lot more and organizing that through deep and meaningful democracy.
Thanks, Kevin. And I think Megan wants to add her two cents.
Thanks. Yeah, to to just add to that, I feel like I need to address there there have been some things in in the writing of memorable tantrum that that are related to this. And, you know, we're seeing some challenges around the the new entity forty proposal and that in in what what ultimately a lot of this is coming down to. And and this also, I I think relates to when we look at healthcare and decisions around the rural hospitals. It's about this local decision-making, local power and local resources. And it's going back to really what Kevin is talking about. That the the people that are living this, that live here, that understand what the community needs, need to have power, need to be listened to and have autonomy to be able to make those decisions and decide where resources go because we know what we need in different places, and it's not going to be the same everywhere. And so I think this is coming up with municipal reform. It's come up with healthcare in terms of equity, rural versus urban, or or what services are needed where it ultimately needs to be that we have, yeah, this deeper democracy, this local decision-making and empowering people, empowering citizens. And I don't mean citizens just status-wise citizens, people engaging in in our communities. And so I wanted to to just add that.
Thank you so much, Megan. For David now, Joan McFarland wants to know if you can ask the government to put caps on the rate that seniors pay at special care and memory care homes. As it is now, the homes can charge whatever they want.
Yeah, it's interesting. Only recently governments have started to pay attention to special care homes, both in terms of the opportunities they provide for for care and to be part of the solution for for providing caring care for seniors. But but also, let's raise the issue of costs. And and I I know by talking to people in the system that that we've seen seniors stuck in hospital rooms who are looking to move to a special care home but can't afford the extra costs that would be involved for some of those homes in their community, particularly St. John is a specific example I know of. And so that's got to be addressed. And that means and and this is not a reflection on the special care homes themselves, but rather on the funding formula or lack of a fair funding formula to ensure that seniors and others who need special care home services can access them affordably. And we need, so that's a piece of work, absolutely, that we need to place some emphasis on in place some emphasis on in the Legislative Assembly. Thank you, Joan, for that.
Thank you, David. And now for Kevin. Deborah Baxter says that we need a greater focus on enlarging unionization. How can we increase unionized jobs?
Absolutely. And, and, and that's a great comment. And there's, there's concrete ways of, of doing that. I had brought forward with, with the caucus anti-scab bill, which needs to pass in New Brunswick. And there also needs to be some, some major changes made to the labor, labor law and labor standards. And, and, and I remember this, this, this on Twitter, it had got a lot of traction when, when government was applauding the arrival of a Walmart in the Walmart in Altrupu, the factory outlet warehouse, exactly, thanks, in the Moncton region. And, and instead of applauding them, I, I, I think we should welcome them with, with strong labor laws. We know that Walmart is a company that has been very historically anti-union. And, and so ensuring that our labor laws in New Brunswick, and I, I don't think these companies come to New Brunswick because of our nice beaches and, and our, our, our well-known hospitality. I think they come here because we have lax labor laws. And we've had governments that instead of encouraging unionization, has been fighting unionization, has been fighting unions. And so just in the way, and, and I could understand that in, in the end of the day, in some cases, government is an employer and must negotiate with unions. But there's a way of negotiation, of negotiating, all while respecting everyone's right to you, uh, unionization and not fighting it as if it was some kind of a problem. And, and so just the shift in how we treat unions in New Brunswick could help, I think, the greater picture and, and, and be encouraging everyone and to get, get either unionized or, or forming worker, worker cooperatives, or, or different forms of of more equitable and, and defense and, and collective bargaining.
And I just add that, to reiterate, that, that there needs to be supportive legislation to make that easier, so that people in sectors that haven't been traditionally unionized can more easily unionize. We know the evidence is is solid about what that means for benefits and wages. So, so important. So we, we played a little role as Greens in, in helping to get first contract legislation in place. So that, that's, that's an example of supportive legislation, which ensures that there's a fair process for places that unionize for the first time to, to establish their, their, their initial first contract. But there's much more that needs to be, to be done legislatively. And that, after all, is the work of of parliamentarians, of MLAs. And so it's, yeah, it, it will be great work. Thanks for, for the suggestion.
Thank you, Deborah, and David, and Kevin for your responses. So Ben Minett asks how we can use our surplus to help address the link between affordable housing supply, poverty and low wages and drug crime. And I believe this is for Megan.
Thanks for the question, Ben. I, I think that this is the type of thinking that I'd like to see in government. I'm worried we won't see, see this investment in, in, basically what I think would be investing in people, investing in our communities, investing in services that people need. And I think, how, well, I know a housing approach, or sorry, a housing first approach is needed. So making sure that people have have housing and then the services that they need to support them. And, and then addressing, we've talked about, you know, having a basic livable income or universal basic income. There's lots of different ways to say it, but essentially making sure people have a steady income and that their, their needs are met. And, and then this is sort of, that's like individual level things. We need, you know, harm reduction supports. We need investing in housing and, and there's the, we need to address like rent caps. We need to make sure people are not getting rent evicted and kicked out of their housing and all these things that are happening right now. But government has also really dropped the ball on their, on the public housing. NB Housing, they sometimes divest themselves of housing that exists because they've let it go into disrepair and they don't take care of it anymore. Or there's mold or whatever in the housing that stock they have. They don't have enough. The waitlist has thousands of people on it. So investing in public housing and, and looking at different ways. You know, there was a question from Steel earlier about seniors housing, but looking at different housing supports, because really it's, it's about taking care of people. And so I'm talking about the care side, about supporting people, but also the approach. We don't need a war on drugs. I, I know that, you know, Higgs Fleming government is, is really in that antiquated mindset of, of just tough on crime and we're gonna do this. And, and I've seen ads even on social media where government's saying like, call up on your neighbor if you think this, this, this. There are serious issues in our communities, but this war on crime mentality, instead of a harm reduction, investing in people, investing communities, like that's the way to go, not, not investing. You know, there's, there's been a lot of talk and I know it's fallen off in the past year, but when, you know, the protests after George Floyd was murdered and Black Lives Matter and defunding the police and discussions around that, that, that those issues haven't gone away. And we need to look at what keeps our community safe and what takes care of people. And that's what we need to be investing in. And that's what governments keep underfunding and not investing in. So we need to change that.
Thank you so much, Megan. I have one more question from Deborah Baxter, which, and we're getting close to the end. So this one will go to David. Deborah asks how we, how do we promote and incentivize the transition to a circular or donut economy? David, you need to get off mute so that we can hear.
Thank you. You gotta vote green. Really? Because, because that reflects a particular worldview that's consistent with, with the, with the values and principles of Greens and green, greens and politics. It's inconsistent with those of the conventional traditional parties like conservatives and the liberals here in New Brunswick. So, so really, in, in, in this, in this, this is a good example. It matters how you vote. And in something like, as fundamental like that, which reflect, requires a sort of paradigm shift in the way we look at the economy and the kinds of programs and legislation and, and, and financial fiscal measures and incentives and so on that are in place, taxation. You gotta come at it with that worldview. And it's not something that is going to emerge out of the traditional parties, I can guarantee you. So I don't want this to sound pat or simplistic, but it does matter who you vote for. And if you're looking for us to move to an economy like that, then you've got to vote for a party who embraces that kind of an economy, who's committed to helping to build that kind of economy. And, and, and those are the Greens.
Thanks so much, David. And one last question for all of you is about public transportation. With you were saying that we are far too dependent on individual vehicles. Some people can't drive or afford a vehicle. What is being done on public transportation, including in rural areas? So I'll start with Kevin on this, please.
Sure, absolutely. And, and, and we are far too dependent on, on personal vehicles. And, and, I mean, electric cars are, are maybe part of the solution, but they aren't the solution for sure. And, and so public transportation is going to be playing an increasing role. And I, I've done the exercise of, of, of trying, well, definitely been thinking about doing the exercise of trying to get the Fredrickson Public Transportation. And that, that is completely very, very hard. And hopefully I have something for you guys coming sometime soon on that. And but I, we also tried the experience of trying to create a cooperative to have access to a vehicle collectively. And, and the way that the laws are written, the, the Co-op Act needs to be, once again, reworked. It was reworked and there was some good changes in it, I think in 2018 or 2019. And the Greens had, had pushed for some stuff on that. But it's, it has to go further. And, and I remember us looking at that model and saying, you know, it could be very interesting as a rural area to have, you know, a collective car that could be used between many families. And, and to ensure that makes it completely impossible. I think for, for six households, we were talking about eighteen thousand dollars a year of insurance. So it, it, it just, it takes away the, the possibility to do it. So we need to definitely break those barriers. And, and that happens with legislation, that happens with the work here as parliamentarians in, in the legislature. But there's much more to add on that. And but I'll let my colleagues continue because I'm sure they'll have very good perspectives on that.
Thank you so much, Kevin. We'll go to Megan and then wrap up with David on this question if possible.
Thanks, Carol. Yeah, transportation is a major challenge, especially when you live in a rural area as, as we see in, in a lot of New Brunswick. A lot of New Brunswick is rural, but, but I know it's, it's a problem in urban areas as well, as well, where there's not adequate public transportation especially, and accessible transportation is an issue. And what we really need is, is leadership and investment in these things. And we, you know, we've, we've mentioned a lot of different areas where government is failing to show leadership, is failing to make investments. And this is another one. We really need public transportation. And one of the reasons we need it is for healthcare, access to healthcare is, is a major barrier. And I, I want to acknowledge that there are people who've been trying hard to put together some solutions to that, you know, those rural rides, there are some different solutions, but we, we need to think bigger on a lot of things. And we need to think bigger on transportation, on public transportation and stop seeing things as the individual problem. Look at the collective, look at what the society needs, look at what the system looks like, the infrastructure that's needed for our communities and not what's that person need, that person need, that person need. Because we just can't keep, well, for one thing, it isn't even fair the way it is now. But we also, we can't keep treating it that way. We can't, yeah, have every single person have an electric car. It's just not the way it goes in terms of, you know, starting to think of this degrowth or, or just not having infinite resources.
So I, I just add to that, I've been talking to the other Green, Green Party leaders in, in the Maritimes, in Prince Edward Island and Nova Scotia about this, about the, and this is something we've discussed in our caucus about approaching public transportation on a regional basis to, to, to really kind of get the economies of scale working there to look at acquiring, having the governments through a crown corporation acquire maritime bus, for example, to provide bus service through the three provinces in a way that really meets people's needs as a public service to acquire the rails in, in, in the Maritimes. Sorry, PEI, I know you lost yours, but New Brunswick, Nova Scotia, to acquire the rails and, and put, put in place in cooperation with a deal with Ottawa and via regional rail service that would meet local needs for transportation. So you can imagine a, a nice seamless system of rails, motor coaches, city transit buses, and, 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 and at those hubs or, or, or bus stations and so on. Imagine a, a hub where you have the bus stops, you have an electric car share operation, so that you can pick up a car there if you needed a car. You've got bike rentals. You've got that whole sort of public transportation hub and then distributed across the region, which would provide you access to, to whatever way you need that's going to suit you best to get around without having to rely on a private vehicle. And I think that would, in a sense, revolutionize our region and put us really put us, put us out in front when it comes to grappling with the need for, for accessible and affordable transportation that that is, is going to also contribute to dramatically cutting our carbon footprint.
Thanks so much, David. And that's a wrap for our questions tonight. I would like to thank David, Megan and Kevin for joining us tonight, but especially everyone who's signed in on Facebook. Kevin mentioned deep democracy earlier, and I think that's exactly what you're displaying by, by joining us in this conversation. Please spread that seed of deep democracy so that we can keep this momentum going. If you want to stay up to date with what Kevin, Megan and David are up to, give them a like on Facebook, Instagram, or follow them on Twitter. And if you do want to participate in this continued conversation in French, please join us on Thursday night. Thank you and have a good night.